The study session of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioner for July 22nd. Glad you're here, those of you who are joining us online and as our panelists here. Thanks for joining us in Zoom as we figure out new ways to do this. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to talk about some of sort of what happens at our study sessions and welcome our, our guests, Sarah.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. This request, this work session was requested to just allow some of our arts and cultural institutions to talk a little bit about the impacts of COVID-19 and, and our current situation and, and share that with the commission. Just for anybody who is, is participating and, and listening at home at work sessions, there are no decisions are made on any topics and it's for discussion purposes only. And so with that, you know, I, I don't know, Michael, are you going to kick things off? Or I don't know who was planning to kick off the conversation.
I think Margaret's kicking us off.
I was gonna kick, kick, kick this off. I was gonna try to come up with something smart and it wasn't coming out. Um, thank you for having us today and this afternoon. We really appreciate the opportunity to communicate with you about what's happening in our industry. And I really wish I had more positive things to share. Usually that's our business is sharing positive things, but today maybe not. Be the rare occasion. Um, the arts and arts education are fundamentally interactive, social and experiential industries and businesses. Um, just think about what it is, what it's like to be in a dance class or the opening of an exhibit on Final Friday, or a concert, or any live theater performance. It is absolutely impossible for us to do what we do while practicing the social distancing that is necessary to prevent the spread of COVID-19. So as a result, the four months of this pandemic has basically gutted our field here and nationally and, and our businesses as well. I'm going to share with you, I'm on the Arts Education Council for Americans for the Arts. And so, um, they have been, Americans for the Arts has been right out of the gate, surveying the field, checking in, seeing what people, what's happening across the country. And they have a really amazing dashboard that you can go in and you can actually drill down and find your, oh, your own county and see, see what the impact is there. So I'm going to share with you some of that data. And I will also share you the link with you. They're constantly updating this dashboard because new information is coming in. And so, you know, the information looks different sometimes when you go on there just because they're, they, you know, it's an ongoing project. Um, so I'll just start out by saying the national economic impact on the arts and culture industry it right now is $9.1 billion lost. Um, there has been a drop in attendees nationwide. We've lost 88 million people attending programming and that's, that's, that includes online programming. 96% of organizations across the country have outright just gone dark, canceled what they're doing. Broadway's dark. Touring is probably not happening. New York City Ballet isn't having their Nutcracker, et cetera, et cetera. It's, it's, it's pretty pervasive. 120,000 employees have been laid off or furloughed, furloughed nationwide. And almost all, almost 100% of organization, arts and cultural organizations are focused on, have migrated their programming to digital and virtual experiences in some way. Philanthropic dollars are focused on the immediate impact of, of social impact of COVID, which is obviously incredibly critical right now. But what that's done is it's also impacted what's available to, to sustain arts and cultural organizations right now. 66% of organizations nationwide report that this is the case for their organization in their area. And two out of three organizations nationally report that they expect to survive the pandemic. Another way of saying that is one third of our nationwide expect to close as a result of this. In Lawrence and Douglas County drilling down to where we are, we have always been incredibly rich in arts and culture. We're really have always been ahead of the curve nationally in terms of the resources that are available here, the cultural resources and also the number of cultural employees we have. But it's really behind the national average and overall and general financial support for the arts. So because of this, in this time, the cultural organizations in our city and county are considered extremely, in the, in the extremely high risk category nationally. In terms of the philanthropic dollars here in Douglas County, you know, I said 66% of organizations nationwide reported that they had seen a dip or that the pandemic has affected their philanthropy. And 100% of organizations in Douglas County reported that they were, had experienced that dip. The CARES Act relief funds, there was money designated for the arts in there, going through the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for Humanities and the Institute for Museum and Library Sciences. And so you could apply in whatever, whatever of these organizations you could be eligible for. The art center is only eligible for the NEA funding, even though we submitted applications for everything, just to see if we could. We didn't, we couldn't, just the NEA for us. So I'll tell you a little bit about what happened in Kansas with that money. So the NEA had 70 million to distribute. About half of that went to state arts councils. So in Kansas, the Kansas Cultural Arts Commission, a Creative Industries Commission. And then I think the regional organizations got some as well. The direct distribution to organizations was, you know, the other half of that, the 35 million that was distributed directly to organizations that were already NEA grant recipients. So had already gone through an NEA granting process in the last few years. So in terms of that money, only four states in the nation received less money than Kansas. Only four organizations in our state received an award. None of these were awarded in Lawrence, despite the fact that we have eight organizations, probably one of the highest concentration of eligible organizations. We had eight here who were eligible to apply and I'm, I mean, I'm sure everybody applied. We did fare better with NEH funding. Steve can talk to that a little bit later. He, he did get one, woo, Steve. So in Douglas County, the average lost revenue per organization, the average amount an organization has lost is five times the national average and eight times the state average. So we're bringing up the rear in both areas. In Lawrence, Douglas County, one cultural organization in three report expecting to survive this. So that's double the national average and they expect to close as a result of the pandemic. Okay, the art center, I'm going to talk a little bit about how this has affected us. The art center has lost over $416,000 in revenue, expected revenue as of the end of June. We were not able this year to hire 52 of our regular contract employees. So these were people who were expecting to work here this summer and this season. 95% of those people are, would have been in teaching positions. So in education and they were all artists, of course. We've had to lay off nine staff members. Mostly these are again, teachers in the preschool and kindergarten. And we had to furlough three staff members. 10 staff have had their hours reduced by an average about, of about 60%. So 74 artists that work here have been affected economically by this. Our salaried staff, staff has chosen to make up the lost hours by taking on, you know, the additional work. The work hasn't slowed, the work hasn't slowed. And so they've been working the extra hours because we have to, we need to stay open to survive this and, and continue offering programs and engaging the community. And this fact, 100% of organizations, the cultural organizations in Douglas County reported being in the, doing this as well, staff taking on extra hours and because of layoffs and, and needing to stay open to engage. And this is, so 100% in Douglas County have reported this as opposed to 77% nationally. Again, kind of bringing up the rear there. At the art center, our enrollment has dropped by 70%. We are running at about 30% of our usual classes and 25% of these are virtual. 100% of our performances have moved online. Ticket sales for online things, tuition and ticket sales for online things are just, it's just really, it's not, it's, people just don't want to pay, can't charge what you do for in-person things. And so all of that for us is in ticket sales is down by like 99%. We basically haven't sold any tickets. Not for lack of trying. So, um, yeah, essentially we have no ticket sales. And those ticket sales in our performing arts budget are usually about 30% of that budget. So they're earning that, that's a, that's a big chunk of, of what they earn. We're a public building and so in order to be open, we do, we've had to adopt new cleaning and behavioral protocols to preserve public health. All of these things have a cost attached to them. And so while our ability to earn revenue is completely tanked, our expenses have actually gone up because of that. So the last time I checked, the art center has spent over upwards of $25,000 in, in this area. And that's probably going to be an ongoing thing. Our fin, the thing that makes me really sad is that our financial aid fund is depleted, which directly impacts the accessibility of our programs just directly. So right at a time when our hearts and minds are totally focused on diversity, equity and inclusion, our ability to remove one of the most clear barriers in this place is, is hobbled. We're predicting actually an even greater amount needed this year in financial aid. So we have a campaign to replenish it, the fund as much as we can. But we are predicting that we will not be able to afford to give out as much as we have in past years. So past years we've given out about, but somewhere between depending on the year, 130 and $150,000 a year. And right now it's less than half that probably. In the years past, when, you know, demand has outweighed the fund, we just continue to grant it anyway because we know that we'll be able to pay ourselves back, you know, farther down the road. But this isn't the case now, um, which is heart wrenching to all of us here. We're trying to figure out if we'll be able to run programs that we've supported through our own budget. So things like school and after school community engagement programs, some of our rural programs, youth development programs, which are career and college prep, free workshops and activities and performances. And I have to say, these are the programs at the art center that are engage the community almost the most and are also the most dear to our hearts. They're why people work at a place like the art center. And so we're really just trying to figure out how we're going to be able to continue these things that don't generate revenue, but are, have high social impact. Planning ahead is, I'm sure everybody experiences this, planning ahead is almost impossible. I've explained it as it's like trying to hit a target in the dark, blindfolded, using a cheap squirt gun and the sprinklers just came on, right? So using our best crystal balls available to us, our 2021 budget is projecting a half a million dollar loss. $500,000. And that, you know, we were, when we were budgeting, we were, we were saying, you know, let's plan A, plan B, plan C. You know, what's, what's worse that can happen, what's the best that can happen? And this was kind of middle of the road. So it's, this isn't the worst case scenario. We're trying to be as positive as we felt safe doing. But even so, a half million dollar loss. We do have some reserves, but they're not going to sustain us at this pace. Basically, we are just simply not able to conduct business in the way that we always have. And we're in a position where we have to and are in the process of reinventing an entire industry. Well, industry like right now. Our businesses are all about people and the core of what we do is public engagement. So if we simply hunkered down and pulled the blinds shut until all this was over, we'd have nothing to return to. So right now and until this is over, our survival is actually dependent on continuing to engage the community. And frankly, you know, I'm in this business and so I might be a little biased, but I think our community needs things like this more than they ever have before. People need this, it's about mental health. And so we're trying the best we can to, to be here. So we have tried to keep our programs going by going online whenever we can. And working with, you know, if we can do in person, it's because of social distancing. It's, it's a little easier in the summertime and the winter, this probably won't be possible. But we're working with about a quarter of the people that were able to work, we have worked with in the past. And, um, we're doing all this without the, the revenue that we've been able to generate in the past. So we know we can get through this and that we'll be able to rebuild and be as active and vibrant as we were before all this, maybe even better because we're learning new things, you know, trying new things and learning new things. But there's a huge gap between then and now and that we have to make it through. And it, to get to the other side of this, to get to that place. I keep describing it as like when we're all walk out into the light again. But it's, you know, we have a ways and in this gap, that gap, and while the pandemic continues, we need help to survive it. Mary, were you going to be next? Thank you for, for letting me speak.
Would you mind, Mary, if I went next? Let me know, is my internet connection okay? Can you hear me? Okay, because it's been, it's been iffy all day today. I, I, I think I want to pick up where, where Margaret left off, saying that, you know, basically the circumstances that they face are the circumstances that the Watkins faces as well. The only difference is really a matter of scale. But we have realized that the ways we used to do business, which, you know, pretty much always involved bringing a bunch of people together, putting them in a small enclosed space and charging the money for it is just not going to work anymore. And that recovery is not going to be a snapback. People are not going to return, we're realizing people are not going to return to the same sets of behaviors that they used to. And that in order for us to continue to serve the public, we have to invent new ways to do that. What we found is, you know, you know, we started this, we went into this pandemic as a sort of blue chip cultural organizations. We had solid offerings, we knew what we were doing, we knew how could we could count on that to earn revenue. We're now startups, everything we try is an experiment. We don't know whether it's going to work or not. We don't know whether it will earn revenue for us or not. And I think the most challenging part is, you know, we're dealing with uncertainty. That's not a, that's not impossible for us to deal with. That's not something we, we can't handle. The problem is we don't know how long we're going to be in for this period. If someone could say, oh, hang on till February, you know, we could figure that out. But we don't know how long we're going to have to hang on. And, and everything is up in the air. And it's really a twofold crisis. It's a short-term survival crisis, but it's also a long-term viability and sustainability crisis. So we have to tackle that on both fronts simultaneously, which is sort of the, it's complicating the, the, the path we choose to move forward and the, and the, our ability to make decisions. To add some particulars for the Watkins to that, in terms of CARES Act funding through the federal government, Margaret mentioned the, the grant programs. Basically what Congress did was turn over a portion of their fund, funding to the cultural agencies that they support, IMLS, NEH and NEA. And those organizations set up a series of competitive grant projects. The Douglas County fared a lot better with the NEH money than they did with the NEA money. Of the 2,300 applications that they received, they funded, I think it was 312. They funded two in Kansas, both in Douglas County, the Spencer Museum and the Watkins Museum. That funding is helping us address our short-term need. We've been able to, because of that grant, retain the funding or retain the staffing that we started with, with for this year. The outlook for us is much more questionable moving forward. We applied for IMLS funding. If we are lucky enough to get that, that would help us with 2021 and 2022. We won't find out about that until sometime in August. So based on that, what we were able to anticipate about our membership revenue and how that would continue, what our endowment might continue to provide, what grants we think we can get, what we hope to get from the, from the county as part of their ongoing funding. We're looking at a budget shortfall in 2021 of about $130,000. We can certainly mitigate that because we can earn revenue. Generally, we earn or raise about half of what it takes for us to operate. We basically double what we get from the county. We just don't know how we're going to do that this year. The ways we've raised funds and the ways we've earned revenue aren't going to work. And there aren't a lot of viable halfway measures for us right now. We, we can't offer a workshop curbside for people to pick up. It, we can't earn revenue that way. So there are just big question marks about how we will be able to fill in that gap. Maybe that's all I'm going to say right now. I think that is all I'm going to say right now.
I'm getting more depressed and I've heard all this before. Not a fun afternoon. Well, let me talk a little bit about the theater. I'm also on the board of, of the Endowment Board for the American Association of Community Theater. So I am getting feedback and information and stuff from theaters all across the country. And it's a pretty bleak picture everywhere. Here in Lawrence, our theater operates primarily on earned income. About 65% of our budget is dependent on earned income. Our revenue stream right now is down about $300,000 from where it would ordinarily be. This would include ticket sales, rentals, concessions, education programming, all of those things mixed together. So far this year, we have canceled six shows, canceled almost all of our summer classes. We've canceled our Penguin Project, which is our special enormous outreach program with special needs kids. Cancelled most of our vintage player programming. And, and very importantly, we have not been able to hire 46 gate workers that we would ordinarily be hiring throughout the summer as teachers and choreographers and musicians and, and all of those kinds of people. We now have one full-time person and one part-time person on furlough. By the beginning of August, we will have another person on reduced hours. We've invested probably in excess of $15,000 right now on mitigation. We have tried to move a lot of our programming outside. If you've been by the theater, we have built an outdoor theater. We're trying to move things outside, do some drive-in theater. This weekend, we're going to try some curbside cabaret. It's small, but it's mighty. We're trying to keep our name out there and trying to provide a venue for people to have a good time. I think that the nicest thing, that the nicest compliment that we have received all summer was from the woman who came to one of our drive-ins and wrote me a note later and said, "Thank you so much. For two hours, I was able to come and feel normal." And, and I think that's an important element that the arts can provide right now. While we have moved things outside and we generally rely on between 400 and 500 volunteers a year. Many of them are in the more vulnerable category. A lot of them are older, so we're not seeing a lot of them turn up. So not only is my staff taking over for each other, but they're also doing a lot of the jobs that would ordinarily be done by volunteers. In fact, after 40 years in the arts, I am now out in the parking lot in a fluorescent vest, helping park cars. So we're, we're sharing it out here. We, as Margaret and Steve have said, our biggest obstacle is not knowing when this is going to be over. We have not been able to have an activity inside the theater since March. That means shows, it means rentals, it means classes. We don't know when we're going to be able to come back in. We're facing the added challenge that one of our most popular forms of entertainment here are our musicals. And if you've been following the medical experts at all, you know that there are lots of studies right now on the dangers of group singing or choral singing or having someone sing at you. So we're looking very hard at our ability to bring back some of the, some of the musicals. One of the things that we're investing a lot of money in right now are transparent face shields that will allow actors to show some emotions so we won't all look like the Lone Ranger. And will also allow us to put microphones inside to project voices. But all of that is, is real iffy. We are hoping to move back indoors sometime this fall, will probably be forced to when it snows. But when we are back indoors, in order to preserve the social distancing that we all have to be aware of, it will mean turning our 300-seat auditorium into a 96-seat house. And that is going to have enormous economic impact on our bottom line. It's, it's absolutely frightening. When Margaret and, and Steve and I have moved down a couple of these presentations together and I sort of get left at the end for the passion, I guess that's the acting part. So let me just say that it's our arts and our culture that bring us together. They enable us to share and preserve our stories. They enable us to share emotions with each other. All the universal emotions of joy and anger and fright and, and hope all come forward through the arts. And I, I guess in a time of, of change and of fear, like we're going through right now, that becomes even more important. And, you know, many of you probably saw one of the summer highlights and that was the, the production of Hamilton that was put on the Disney Channel. And if you watched that show through to the end, you saw about eight minutes of credits at the very end of that show. You saw everybody listed there, from the actors to the dressers, to the musicians, to the people that made the hats and went for the food and all of those things, eight minutes worth of people. Those are people in our industry. And those people are all unemployed right now. So whether we're looking at Broadway or we're looking at Lawrence, Kansas, the arts and cultural institutions that we all rely on are in extreme danger, right? the arts and cultural institutions that we all rely on are in extreme danger right now. And, and we hope that somewhere in, in all of the, all of the struggling that all of you have to do and all of our government officials have to do, that we can find some sort of relief for, for those things that, that preserve us as human beings. Thank you.
Okay. As Mary said, this group has been doing this a lot. And I think sometimes we, we even miss some of the things that we, that we've talked about in previous ones. I want to talk a little bit about us and then I want to kind of add some texture to some of the things that Margaret and Steve and Mary said. You know, explore Lawrence. You know, many people think our job is putting people in hotel rooms. That's what they think about us as an organization. But as we've been going through this whole, this whole experience, I'm thinking that, you know, we're an arts organization. I mean, we do the Final Friday marketing. We have been for over a year and a half coordinating the, the Arts Roundtable, which used to be a monthly meeting, now it's a bi-month, a bi-weekly meeting, to bring the arts community together to talk about things. One of our marketing personas is based on culture and arts. So we know how important it is. So we have a number of ways that we market and culture is one of the key ones.
And there's one for you too, remember?
Yes. We also have done joint marketing with, with Douglas County. We did that all around the cultural institutions, all around the county. That was a great program we did, we did one year. We also are involved in the Block by Block Program, which was a project put together with journalism students at a KU where they looked at buildings downtown and gave us all history. It's one of the key things on our website as we talk about our community. As part of our Tourism Ambassador Program, Steve is one of the, the key components. As I say, I'm the boring one. I talk about the dollars. And he's the one that talks about the history and, and the rich history we have here in, in Lawrence and Douglas County. So what's going on in all these institutions and all other cultural institutions are key to what we do. And one of the things I think make these three organizations unique is that they are the brick and mortar cultural institutions we have in our community. I mean, they've got physical spaces they have to keep alive. And I think that's what puts them in a unique situation. And one of the things that I guess we talked about in, in previous ones is that all these institutions are still doing programming. But the problem is the programming isn't bringing in the revenue. And we have to do it. They have to do programming because if they don't, we fade into people's backgrounds. So, you know, the, the Story Slam that, that the Arts Center did, that I said, you know, we had almost 100 people there. Steve's been doing amazing programs. Mary has been sending out emails with, with clips from old shows that have again kept everybody reminding us that we have great cultural institutions and great art here. So, you know, anything that could be done to, to support this because it is key to not only what I do, but key to the, to what Lawrence is all about. We are a culturally rich institution. The first event I ever went to when I came to Lawrence was a Story Slam in, in the Black Theater downtown and nobody knew me. And then I went to a show at the Theater Lawrence and Mary embarrassed me by telling anybody in the audience I was here. But that's, that's part of what we have in this community, it's the richness. So again, anything to be done to help, to help our cultural institutions would be great. And, and that's basically all I have to say. And again, I, I have, I always appreciated these organizations, but this last number of months of struggle, I appreciate them more because I'm on the board of Theater Lawrence and Mary has done amazing things to try to keep the organization up and running. So it's, you know, it's a challenging time for us. But again, these are three key institutions that, you know, if we can find ways to support them, we would greatly appreciate it. So thank you all.
Thank you, Margaret and Steve and Mary and Michael for sharing that heartbreaking. I mean, it's just heartbreaking to me. I mean, I, I think all of us are so engaged in these institutions and it's such the fabric of Douglas County. And to hear the hurting that I hear in your voices, it's, it's heartbreaking. It's, it's just difficult. I want to open it up for commissioners if they have questions of these folks or of Sarah. I mean, maybe I'll start. Sarah, can you talk a little bit about CARES Act funding? And I'm sure all four of these folks are, and, and other institutions are engaged in that process sort of, but for the public too as well, you know, just explaining how that process is working and how they might be engaged in it.
Yeah, I'd be glad to, Commissioner Kelly. And, and I hope my internet doesn't fail. So if it does, you know, the show must go on, as our friends would say, and someone can ad lib for me. But my internet's been really crunchy today. So the, there's lots of rounds of CARES Act and Coronavirus Act relief funds coming down from the federal government to a variety of institutions. And that, you know, Margaret and Steve talked about some of those earlier. The one that we know most specifically about is the CARES Act Round. One funding that came to the state of Kansas and will be distributed to counties. And there's approximately 400 million statewide that are going to be distributed. Douglas County will receive 24.9%, or I'm sorry, 24.9 million of those funds. And eligible expenses are pretty broad. You know, it, it is the focus of, of those funds to go to help prepare our health and medical ability to reimburse organizations that have already incurred expenses for that this year, but then also to be prepared for the rest of this year to respond to our health and medical needs in this community. But there is room for grants and/or programs for business interruption and distance learning are two particular areas and as well as any measures related to things that organizations have done to buy dividers and protective equipment and say these more, more accessible to the public. So I do think that, I know that most of these folks have been engaged in our RSF1 for economic impact and have, have gotten the forms through that process. And, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing applications from them in this process. Like we have said, we anticipate that we're going to get $50 million in really great requests and, and only have $24.9 million to, to, to fund. I am excited though. I mean, today, the Spark Committee met in a long session and talked about funding for round two and, and really in breaking that out a little bit differently and, and a variety of different areas. So I would highly encourage folks to look at that and see if there's some potential for some ways to get some resources at that level as well. Round two will stay managed by various state agencies, not, not just the Spark Committee, but would be managed at the state level. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about where we're standing on CARES Act funding.
I, I actually, we had a question, the three of us talking earlier and just kind of processing your, the great webinar that happened today about CARES Act. Is it, would you, do you think it's more effective for the three institutions to apply as a group with an umbrella, under an umbrella organization? Or do you think it is more effective or, or better for us to apply individually?
You know, I, I'm not sure it, it, it really necessarily matters. One advantage of umbrella organization is if you're tying it, you know, it needs to be tied to something specifically related to COVID. And so umbrella organization ties, ties it to that. And let's say one organization isn't able to materialize all the reimbursements in one area for that, another organization could, could share in that. Does that make sense? So the one thing coming in together is there's some flexibility about how, you know, if, if, you know, something came in a little cheaper and you had, you know, some extra funds, it could go to a different organization.
I'm sorry, you go ahead, Steve.
Does it, does it matter that we would have to pick one of our organizations to serve as an umbrella? There's not like a logical pre-existing umbrella, like a professional organization for the restaurants? Like has been, has been talked about before, or just pick someone and go?
Yeah, I don't think it matters. And we fully anticipate like on the human services side that some of those nonprofits will just step up and, and manage something like tenants to homeowners might manage, you know, rent assistance for a variety of organizations. So it's, it's really whatever you feel like, whichever organization can help manage that process. Because there will be a lot of, you know, there's going to be some pretty detailed, nothing compared to an IMLS grant, but some pretty detailed spreadsheets and accounting that would be required as to, to account for those funds.
I'm getting super duper good at that kind of stuff, so.
I've seen those spreadsheets and they're impressive. So, yeah.
Great, thank you.
So I, I have a question. It may be that I just don't quite understand the boundaries, boundaries around the arts and culture industry. But I'm wondering about those people who run the event spaces that our community has grown to count on for our outdoor festivals, our mass street concerts, our kind of live music events that are also a very deep part of our kind of community enjoyment and commitment to the arts. So it is, they seem to be often in their own special category and kind of advocating for their own very small slice of the pie, it seems like. Is there, I guess where, is, is that group part of your group? Or is that a separate, I mean, they're not here at this meeting, so they must be kind of deemed to be a separate entity. Is that kind of how it's viewed or, or are they?
There, I mean, they, there are parts of our businesses that intersect. The, you know, the front-facing stuff. But essentially, these institutions are nonprofits because we're really kind of more in the, what underlies all of our work is number one, the creation of the work, not the presentation of the work, but the actual creating of it, and then also education. So it's, it's just a little different, but there are absolutely some things that we, I mean, have in common. The numbers that I gave you before, the national numbers did not include, was only for nonprofit businesses like this. Did not include that for-profit side of the industry. Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's a really helpful distinction because I, yeah, in some ways I don't, if you're not, if you're on the, the audience side of things, you don't make that distinction so much. You just know that you love what, what everybody does. So it's, that's a helpful distinction. Thank you.
I, I would bet there are equally compelling numbers about the for-profit entertainment industry and how they hit as well.
Yeah. Steve, I have a quick question for you. And that is, you've said, I think through our budget conversations and other meetings that this is a moment where all of the other heritage or historical societies, that kind of alliance of historical societies for Douglas County are really in a moment of great collaboration and kind of a unified front for survival right now. And so it, I guess I want to make sure when you're, when you're speaking in this realm right now with this group, are you representing all of the historical societies in terms of kind of looking out for their interests as well? For whatever comes, is that, is the, is the, is the hope to kind of be the voice for all of them so that they'll benefit from whatever CARES Act dollars there might be as well?
Yes. And, and actually, I'm actually glad you answered that question because I realized I didn't mention the one silver lining in, in all of this. And, and we don't have to, you know, it does not all have to be doom and gloom because, you know, there's something, a crisis brings people together. And, you know, it has really resulted in Margaret, Mary, Michael and I forging a partnership where we're looking out for each other's interests, kind of keeping our ears to the ground, thinking about how we can help each other. Jan and I are working together in the same way to help the other heritage organizations. I think that there is real opportunity for us. And, and also I think an increased desire to work together and present what we do for the county as a united front, to think about how we can collectively advance things like applications for grants, joint fundraising. That, that this CARES funding presents another opportunity too. The, the thing is about the, the heritage agencies there, they, we kind of run the gamut in the, in the county sort of given the, the kind of scale and responsibilities that they have. All of the organizations have some kind of site upkeep to be responsible for. Places like Clinton Lake, La Compton, they have occupancy expense, ongoing occupancy expenses associated with the facilities they operate. Udora and the Watkins have, have staffing expenses that they need to consider. And what, which means then in these times when we face decreased revenue, the effects of that play out in different ways and with different levels of severity. At Black Chicken, it might mean that the grass gets longer than usual. In Clinton Lake, it means that they might not hire a, a part-time person during the summer. In Udora and, and at the Watkins, it means that we eliminate staff positions. And that's especially, especially challenging now because we need staff and their brain powers to help us figure out how we're going to transform into something else. And I know that that is the same at, at Theater Lawrence and at the Arts Center, that it's really people and they're thinking about the future that helps, that will help us bridge this gap, figure out what should our businesses be? How are we going to mediate the kinds of circumstances we're in? Now, we've started to explore how do we create exhibit, hands-on exhibits? Everyone wants to touch stuff. Well, how do you create those kinds of things? And, and with materials or under circumstances that are microresistant or self-disinfecting so that people who are at risk factors, and, and we have those children and senior citizens, can engage with the museum fully and not run a health, health risk? Figuring those things out takes time and time is something we don't have because we see our, our revenues drying up. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that, you know, not only does a, a crisis bring people together, it makes people think about the status quo in a different way and opens them up to new and creative solutions. And here, I just want to share a little story from the past. After all, I have to represent history. But in the 1970s, the cultural institutions in St. Louis were faced with a crumbling tax infrastructure to support them. People were leaving the city of St. Louis in droves. And they, the, the city and the county banded together to come up with what was then an incredibly creative solution, which was to create a joint tax district that in essence united St. Louis City, which functions as its own county, and St. Louis County so that a broader tax base would support these four institutions that all happen to be located inside the city of St. Louis, even though they were used by residents across the metropolitan area. And it ended up creating a solution that has created four of the nation's leading institutions, an art museum, a history museum, a science museum and a zoo that have international reputations. You know, we're facing another one of those crises here in Douglas County. And while we have to look to the, the short-term or the midterm calamities that we face, I hope we can also use this as a way of, of launching us into thinking about what new models would be necessary to create long-term sustainability. I think there's real possibility there. And we're learning to work together in new ways, which is going to make that a lot easier. Sorry, that was a really long answer to your question, Nancy. I decided I'd try to put everything in there.
Well said, Steve.
Thank you.
I just remember that in, in that presentation I was in a long time ago with you all, there, there was, it, it did turn, it pivoted to, to that silver lining moment, which I think that's really important.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's hard, awful news, most of this, but it's a real testament to your, all of your talents and your spirit that, that you can find that silver lining and that's sure what we need, you know, now and for a long time. So thank you for that. Thanks, Steve.
Can you all talk maybe a little bit about, you know, you saw an article in the paper earlier this week about PPE and payroll protection? And have you used that? Are there limitations for nonprofits? I mean, are there things that you haven't been able to access because of your organizational structure?
I can talk a little bit about this and then pass it. We all, I believe, got PPE loans, not PPE, PPP loans. And this is a phenomenon that happened nationally was that there was some, like nonprofits in some, you know, administered by banks, and some banks did not consider nonprofits eligible in what they would, what I heard was first round. And so they wouldn't, they weren't opening the portal to nonprofits to apply for the PPP loans until they had gotten some threshold through with other types of businesses. The three of us were able to find banks that weren't administering their portals that way. So we all got a PPP loan. And the way they were figured is, you know, you were to take your average salary, an average of your monthly salaries or the month of February, and then, you know, extrapolate it out to cover eight weeks of payroll. And so we did that, and the intention was that, and very, the directions and the message was very clear that this is about keeping people employed. And so there was a certain percentage you could spend on mortgage and utilities, but really, there was a percentage they really wanted it to go to payroll. And at the Lawrence Arts Center, you know, our priority, my priority, the board's priority, the leadership's priority here is keeping people in their jobs. And so we used 100% of our PPP loan on payroll. And so we were able to cover eight weeks. But after eight weeks, you know, we're, it's done, it's out. So, you know, that bank account is empty.
Yeah, I think I can echo Margaret there. We're the same way. We used all of our PPP on salaries. One of the things that affected us a bit was that, according to the PPP guidelines, you were not able to include contract employees. And several of the folks that we use on a regular basis are contract employees. So we had some challenges with that and finding money to pay them and keep them on salary. But yeah, it's a very limited time, and PPP funds have run out, and the money isn't coming in yet. So it's a challenge.
Just, I was just going to echo what Mary said is, you know, a huge portion of the arts and culture industry, the people who work in it, you know, they're contractors. They're artists who go to a show, you know, put up, you know, they're choreographing here, they're directing there, and that's how they earn their money. And that was not covered in the PPP. And so that's why we weren't able to hire those people, those 52 people this summer. Sorry, Michael, you go ahead.
Yeah, we are 501(c)(6), so we didn't qualify for that. There is, hopefully, in the next round of funding, they'll start qualifying 501(c)(6)'s, which are Chamber of Commerce and organizations like us. We were able to get an idle loan, which we were very thankful for.
The Watkins was one of those small nonprofits that went through a big bank and was asked to wait at the end of the line. We missed the first round of funding, and we would have not gotten a PPP loan if they hadn't increased the amount of money from the initial amount. But like everyone else, it was eight weeks' worth of funding, which for us was May and June for staffing expenses only. The NEH grant picks up some of that moving forward, but it was a competitive grant, and you had to identify what outcomes you were going to achieve and what aims of the NEH you would address with those. And we focused our program on public engagement to mostly cover the staffing expense associated with transferring our public programs to an online version and creating things like the outdoor exhibits we put up that would make the museum accessible at times when social distancing is necessary. So we're getting some support for staff and a little bit of support for some additional materials. But that's focused on the public engagement function for the museum. We still have all of our regular operating expenses, collections expenses, research expenses, plus new expenses for cleaning the building, mitigating public health. Those, the federal funds we've gotten so far are not covering those kinds of expenses.
Other questions, commissioners? Sarah, anything else to add? Well, we so appreciate you coming and sharing a silver lining along with some very disappointing news. And I know a couple of you, maybe not ones on this call, but I've written some letters of support for some of your grants. And we, you know, whatever we can do, I'm sure to help in that way. Please let us know. We hope that you'll get involved. I certainly do hope you, and it sounds like you all are, in that CARES Act funding and the multiple rounds of it. Because we, these organizations are so important to us and so important to this community. We appreciate all that you do and appreciate your employees and your audiences, so.
You know, maybe to add to our list of silver linings, circumstances are changing constantly. Maybe this can be the beginning of an ongoing dialogue or conversation between the arts and culture sector and the county commission to kind of let you know how things are going, or for you to ask us new questions based on what you see. We would very much like to engage in that way, instead of just engaging in budget time, which is all we do right now.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. Thank you all so much. And
Thank you.
We'll adjourn our study session, and we'll be back at 5:30 for our regular business meeting.
Thank you.